I'd like to welcome you to the March 12, 2007 City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. Please stand up and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call role?
Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Len?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Chair Fisher?
Here.
Okay, we'll go to public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the Commission on issues that are within the Commission's purview and not on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes, and I don't have any public comments. Okay, go to number five, written comments announcements. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to draw the Commission's attention to a supplemental packet for Case 6C, which is on your agenda for tonight, having to do with Mesa Ridge Oaks. It includes an additional condition for that oak tree permit major modification. And then also, I would like to mention that Case 6A has been removed from the agenda because the applicant has redesigned their project so that it no longer requires Planning Commission review in terms of the percentage of additional square footage that is being added. In this particular case, the applicant removed the third story that was previously proposed, and that's all I had at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Will the Secretary please call Case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding Case PPD 2007-70023. Applicant Scott and Lisa Kennedy, request to allow the construction of first and second floor additions with a balcony to an existing single-family dwelling. Location 1613 Tanbark Court. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Miss Commissioner Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Fisher. As it turns out, my home is less than 500 feet from the Kennedy home, so there's a rule in Thousand Oaks, if you're less than 500 feet from the subject property, you need to recuse yourself, so that's what I have to do in this particular matter. So I will be recusing myself, and goodbye.
Mr. Chang?
Good evening, Chair Fisher, and members of the Commissions. If we can turn your attention to the screen in front of you. This project is at the 1613 Tanbark Court, and the applicant is proposing to construct first and second story addition with a balcony to existing two-story, single-family dwellings. And the project consists of adding a kitchen, office, and bedroom on the first floor, and for the second floor, the applicant is proposing to add bedrooms and also bathrooms. And the applicant is also proposing to have a balcony, but which is facing the rear yard area. And the project is going before the Commission reviews because according to the municipal code that the additions, if the second floor addition where the total added-floor area exceed 50% of the existing footprint, the project will need to go before our Planning Commission for review. And in this case, the project is adding approximately 67% to the existing building footprint. And this is the project location, and basically, the addition will be facing to the rear of the existing house. This is from, existing from the elevation of the buildings, and for the two-story addition, basically, will be to the right-hand side of this picture here. And basically, the second-story addition will be, the roof will actually be carried over, and the building height will be, remain the same. And this is the rear elevation of the house, and based on this picture, the two-story addition will basically, on the left-hand side of the picture, you can see a little area which they have the room to construct two-story additions. And the balcony portion basically will be at where the existing patio cover is, and the patio cover will be demolished, basically make room for the future two-story addition as well as for the balcony. And for project design, the applicant is proposing to add two-story addition, and on the first floor, it will be approximately 893 square feet, and the second-floor addition will be approximately 600 square feet, and the balcony addition will be 252 square feet. And this project lot is, has approximately one acre. And regarding the building height for the two-story addition, there's no increase in the building height. Basically, the addition will have the same building height, which is 24 feet and 5 inches, which complies with the municipal code requirement. And for the exterior colors and material, you will match with the existing house. And for recommendations, staff is recommending the Commission to approve this project based on the findings and subject to the conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation. And staff is ready for any questions.
Questions to staff? Nope? Okay, we will go to open the public hearing. I've got one card, Lisa Kennedy, as the applicant. You have 15 minutes. Please come up to the podium, state your name, city of residence for the record.
Lisa Kennedy, 1613 Tanbark Court in Westlake Village, 91361. Hi. Um, I wasn't really, didn't know I really had to come up here other than answering any questions, so I guess I'll just tell you why we're doing this. We have four existing bedrooms and three baths, and we had twins about two years ago, so we need the space, and we want to stay in the house. It's got a lot of space, we have an acre. So from the backyard, we're really not taking up any space at all because we're just basically going to the side except for the balcony. So we love the park in the front, and all our neighbors are on board, they're all excited that we're, you know, adding some value to the house. So, and I had my neighbor on the left tell me she would actually come tonight, but I thought, I didn't think it was necessary, but she's, everyone's definitely on board. And we're not part of the homeowners association, our cul-de-sac is separate from that, so we don't have any homeowners at all.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Kennedy. You said the neighbor on the left, is this facing the house on the left side where the one-story addition will be?
Actually, she, if you're facing my house, she's on the right.
Oh, on the right, with the one-story, okay.
So it's the same side as the addition, and she's all for it. She's actually getting ready to do a remodel herself, and we thought maybe we would do, try and do something together, so she's completely on board.
Okay, that's good. I know we're always interested and wanted to make sure that you have talked to the neighbors, by the way.
Yeah, and all the three others as well.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kennedy.
Okay, thank you.
We'll come back to you shortly.
All right.
Staff, Mr. Chang?
Staff has no comment this time.
Okay, I'm assuming, Mrs. Kennedy, you don't have any rebuttal or additional information for us? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open for Commission discussion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I'm very pleased that they talked to the neighbors about the additions that they're making on their home, and it is a very large lot. I was out there. So with that, I will move approval of PPD 2007-70023, as staff has recommended with the findings and conditions as attached.
No comments to the motion? Looks like a great project, good luck with it, congratulations. Vote, please.
Motion passed 4-0.
And for the record, there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. I guess we'll give it a minute for Commissioner Adam to rejoin us. There he is. Will the Secretary please call Case 6C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6C regarding Case OTMJ 2007-70047. Applicant Mesa Ridge Oaks LLC, request to allow the removal of three oak trees, the transplantation of three oak trees, and the encroachment within the protected zone of one oak tree. Location 222 West Hillcrest Drive. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Mr. Alawami?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'd like to direct your attention to TV screen for staff's presentation. As mentioned, the case is an oak tree permit major modification. The applicant is Mesa Ridge, and it's for the Oaks Mall renovation. The area map shows the location of the request of the oak tree's location in the south side of the Oaks Mall. The applicant requests is to, they're requesting approval of a major modification to the existing oak tree permit for the Oaks Mall expansion or renovation to remove three oak trees, transplant three oak trees, and encroach within the protected zone of one oak tree. The removal of four or more native oak trees requires Planning Commission review, and that's the reason this major modification is before you tonight. The code requires, as a replacement, is that, as a replacement for removal, that three oak trees planted for each oak tree removed. Five of the six oak trees proposed for removal or transplantation are native to the site, which are coastlife oaks, except for one, which is a cork oak, which is a cork oak. Four of the trees are seedlings of oak tree number 156, and they're smaller in size, trunk size. The relocation removal request is due to a surveying error of the location of the west parking structure. The tree location affects approximately 33 parking spaces, a loss of which would impact the center's expansion, square footage expansion. The encroachment request is due to widening of the ring road in the south side of the knoll for additional traffic lane. This oak tree site plan shows the location of the oak tree that's been removed. On top of the site plan is the location where the oak tree is going to be removed. The shaded area is the cut slope for the construction of the west parking structure, and those trees are located within that area. On the south side, or on the bottom side of this map, is the encroachment under the one oak tree, and it shows the sidewalk, the retaining wall, and the shaded area is the 221 slope encroachment under that oak tree. Pictures of the oak tree, this is a picture of oak tree number 156, which is the big one in the middle, 156A, and 156A, B, C, and D, as viewed from the south side. For Commission's information, 156D is an oak tree that's less than two inches, and it's not protected by the municipal code. This is a picture of oak tree number 156E, as viewed looking from the north. Again, a picture of oak tree 157, as viewed looking east. And this is oak tree number 163, as viewed looking north from the south ring road, and that's where the encroachment of widening the road and the retaining wall will take place, on that sloped area in the bottom of the oak trees. Staff analysis regard the request, oak tree number 156 is the largest oak tree, proposed for removal, however, it is structurally unsound and in poor health. Oak tree 156P is leaning and lacks a canopy on one side. Oak tree number 156A, which is a two-inch diameter, a tree, the tree removed accidentally during brush clearance per the supplemental packet that you got tonight. Three oak trees to be transplanted are good candidates. Sixty-inch box tree proposed for oak tree 156A as restitution, and applicant has agreed to plant this large tree as a result of the accidental removal of 156A. And then, as per the code, four 24-inch box trees and two 36-inch box trees will be required to replace the other two trees. The encroachment under oak tree 163 is involve, again, widening of the south ring road to add two lanes of traffic in each direction, the construction of a new sidewalk, 221 slope on top of a six-foot-high retaining wall. The encroachments within this oak tree will not impact any roots, or will not impact the health of the tree because the tree is at the top of the knoll. Widening the ring road will improve the traffic flow and public safety. This exhibit shows the proposed concept for planting the trees as a mitigation for the removal of the trees for tonight, for, as requested tonight. Background, the Plan Commission on October 23 last year previously approved oak tree permit major modification as part of the Oaks Mall expansion, which includes 353 oak trees to be planted as replacements for 30 oak trees. The code only requires 114, 21 oak trees to be transplanted, and 17 encroachments. Environmental for this major modification, per sequel, addendum to previously certified AIR is required when changes to a project unnecessarily that do not substantially increase the severity of previously identified significant effects. As noted in the final AIR number 323, which you have a copy of for the Oaks Mall, implementation of recommended mitigation measures reduces direct and indirect impacts to a less-than-significant level. The city has determined that the proposed removal of six oak trees and encroachment within the protected zone of one more oak tree will not result in any substantial effects that cannot be mitigated. Staff recommends that the Commission approve the addendum to AIR number 323 and approve oak tree permit major modification based on the findings in the report and such as conditions. And staff will be answering questions.
Questions to staff? Commissioner Len?
Good evening, sir. How are you this evening?
Good evening.
Good. Reference the addendum that we received today regarding oak tree 156A. Can you tell us how staff discovered that? Did the applicant come to you, or did we discover this on our own?
Staff discovered it. Deputy Director and myself went out there to, for inspection before the final report was, after the report was done, and we discovered that oak tree 157 was, A was not there. And we, I caused, staff called the applicant and their consultant and informed them of that situation.
At which time, we were told that it was done by the general contractor?
Correct. They were doing a brush clearance at that site, and accidentally, that tree was removed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Alawami. How are you?
Good.
Just one question. In the staff report, it says that the subject trees were not previously identified due to a surveying error. However, if you go to the original environmental impact report, number 323, in section 4.9, where it maps out all the trees, in figure 4.9-1A, it clearly identifies all the trees and the knoll, and it says that they, and it's all legended, that they would be preserved. So why is there this disparity with the staff report saying they weren't identified, but the AIR clearly identifies?
Correct. The AIR and the original oak tree report identified all trees on site. However, when the grading plan was in the process to be prepared for the west parking structure, they found out that the plotting of the location of the west parking structure is not where it's supposed to be, and as a result, those oak trees are impacted because of the surveying of the location of the parking structure. Was surveyed in the wrong location. And at the time, we looked, the AIR was prepared, that was not an issue. But when they started processing the grading plan or doing the grading plan for the project, they found out that's not where the west parking structure is located. It's further to the south, which will, which impacts those oak trees.
Okay, but originally, though, they were, they were identified. It's not like these trees were missed.
If I could clarify, they're identified, they were studied, but they were not identified for either removal or to be relocated because of the location that they were depicted in the original oak tree survey. They are identified, and they were analyzed, they just weren't contemplated to be removed or relocated.
No, I understand the circumstances that have occurred since then, but originally, they were identified, and they were slated to be preserved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? I've got one question. In the future, I guess who's minding the shop over there while they're doing grading? I mean, who keeps track of what they can and can't do?
Well, tonight, we have the applicant's oak tree consultant and construction, two construction managers, and I, staff been told that they will be monitoring the construction activity, and hopefully, this will not happen again, and they could make that statement when they come up, speak.
So does staff monitor the monitors?
We will be going out there more often, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I have a question. In the addendum, it talks about oak tree 156A, but I can't find it in any of the pictures, and this is dated February 27th, so I don't understand why it's identified, and there's an evaluation on it, but it's not shown in any of the photographs. It was probably removed by then, or?
Actually, the addendum, it's, the first picture in the addendum, it's misidentified. It shows in the bottom picture, the 156E is actually 156A.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Call up the applicant, Dave Hokinson. Mr. Hokinson, please state your name, city of residence for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Dave Hokinson, with the Mesa Ridge Company at 401 Wilshire Boulevard, Santa Monica, California. Just some very brief remarks, because when we did get the call from Mr. Alawami last Thursday, very surprised, shocked that it had occurred, especially with respect to the removal of 156A, which wasn't an accidental occurrence. Since that time, we have set up a procedure whereby, you know, our, our staff, which is Joaquin Lopez and Sean O'Connor, are monitoring the contractors' work on the site. In addition to that, we have gone through and had every protected tree resurveyed to make sure that we're not running into this at a later date. And furthermore, all of the trees have been re-tagged to make sure that it's very clear what is to be preserved from those that are scheduled for removal. So beyond that, if you have any questions, I'm certainly available to answer those.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Hokinson. You're speaking for Mesa Ridge, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're familiar with the project and all the details that are involved here? Okay. I have a couple of questions for you. In the original AIR, number 323, if you look at, in section 221, and if you also look in section 6, you know, they have schematic of the mall and all the different features, and you can clearly see this oak grove and the knoll that it rests on. In both of those pictures, it shows the west parking structure, but it's interestingly enough, it shows a notch, a notch, indented into the parking structure to allow the knoll, I would presume, to remain untouched. Are you familiar with this notch?
I, I am familiar with that, and actually, the parking structure that is shown on the plan is a larger parking structure on a north-south basis, primarily because we were actually using a universal parking stall in the parking deck, which allowed us to, I think, shrink it, shrink the width of the, or the depth of the deck by 15 feet. So if you look at the inboard line of the notch, as it comes down and around, we've actually aligned the outside wall with that line. So we were actually able to, to reduce the overall parking deck, preserve more of the site. And then, in the midst of all this, also found out that the surveyor that had run through and surveyed the trees of the knoll had actually not located them properly.
Right.
Does that make sense?
A little bit. So has the notch approach been abandoned, then?
I beg your pardon?
Has the notch, the approach whereby you would circumvent the knoll with this notch into the parking structure, that you're not, you're not proposing that you do that anymore?
We are not. If, in fact, we were to notch it, it would result in a reduction of 33 parking stalls, and we are right at our parking ratio for the proposed project today.
Okay. All right, I understand. Well, and which brings me to another question about the 33 spaces that you would be shy if you were to notch this, or in essence, just move the whole thing back a little bit. Could the 33? Could the 33 spaces that you're shy be picked up in the east garage in the second phase?
That is conceivable, yes.
That's possible?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I'm going to change the topic here for just a second. On the southern side of the knoll, where the proposed road is, two lanes each way, I noticed that there's a proposal there for a sidewalk as well. There is not a sidewalk there now.
Correct.
But there is a proposal for a sidewalk. Why do you feel you need that sidewalk?
There is a pedestrian linkage that is located at Lynn Road in the southwest quadrant of the site. And as that comes about, we, we actually had kind of continuity along the southern perimeter. There is logic to suggest that, you know, if we could bring people up through the parking deck or adjacent to it to connect, it is a little more circuitous route, especially if you're attempting to get to the, the new transit stop that's located on the east side, south side of the center, east quadrant. So that's the primary purpose of that. Because as you look at distribution of parking in that area, most everybody who will be parking there will be accessing the shopping opportunity, and they would move north as opposed to running down around the bottom of the knoll and coming around.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, that Lynn Road little ramp that goes down?
Yes, sir.
And there's a, there's a crosswalk there, and it leads into the parking lot. Right. So you're saying that that sidewalk would somehow connect to that, then? I see.
I believe that was the intent, yes.
I see. How long, how long will that sidewalk be?
How long will it be?
Yeah. Do you know approximately? About the width of the knoll?
I, I think it runs the entire width of the knoll. Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. And as far as the encroachment on Oak number 163 on the south side, you know, with the highway or the road that you're planning on building, are you, will you be less than 15 feet from the trunk?
Boy, I don't know, to be honest with you, and I would have to ask John Ennis. No.
You will not?
No.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Lynn.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I appreciate your forthrightness in talking about the procedures you put in place for Oak Tree 156A. And could you just kind of clarify for us? You, you indicated that you resurveyed all the trees on, on the project, is that correct?
All the protected trees on the project, yes, sir.
As they relate to being protected, or as they relate to the project itself, so we don't have another visit here on what we were originally here for tonight?
Where, as it relates to the project, certainly, we don't know where they're at in the world, and then, as we had the resurvey performed, to the extent that there were any, if there was any difference between what was originally surveyed by one crew, which has been resurveyed by another, we're right, all the trees are where they're supposed to be, with the exception of the knoll.
In relation to the project, what we're trying to do is to get a feel here that we, we won't be coming back again. You know, we're early stage of this project now.
Very true.
And I know it's tough for you, but that we won't be coming back here for the original reason that you were here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hokinson.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I've got, go to other speakers. I've got John Ennis. Did you want to speak, Mr. Ennis? Mr. Ennis, please state your name, city of residence, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. John Ennis, landscape architect, 497 Fargo, Thousand Oaks, and the landscape architect and oak tree consultant on this project. And here mostly for questions. I think staff has certainly presented all the facts here. Two things that I, I think I could hopefully clear up a little better, Mr. Adam, and asked the question about, two things about the notch and the sidewalk. It's not that the parking structure got bigger when the notch was eliminated, the parking structure got smaller with the elimination of the notch. We'd still be in this predicament whether there was the notch or not, because the initial survey was off by 10 feet. And so that's, that's why we have that problem on the north end of the mall, on the north end of the, of the knoll. On the south side, where we have the retaining wall for the widening of the ring road, which was a public works requirement, and then the sidewalk, that sidewalk is there now. Sidewalk runs on the west side of the knoll right now. From that point, it meanders up to Lynn Road, comes, comes through the, directly adjacent to the knoll and over to the existing mall. Since that path will, will now be a parking structure, we're going around the knoll and around the parking structure to get people to the building. So it's the, it's the point of access from, from the corner of Lynn and Hillcrest. That's what that sidewalk serves. So if there's any other questions on the, on the site, or the?
Commissioner Adam.
Hello, Mr. Ennis. How are you? Just a couple of questions, if you may. Maybe we're not talking about the same sidewalk. The sidewalk I would be referring to is the one that runs, I'm getting my directions here, would be run west to east. It's, well, would run parallel to the road, parallel to the road. Is that the one that you were referring to as well?
Yes. It runs parallel to the road.
All right.
And you can, you can still walk that portion right now, except it's fenced off. And then it stops at the point directly across from the west side of the knoll. At that point is where you cross the street and would have, at this, until the project started, you would have gone on a sidewalk that took you directly to the mall. That path now is, will be blocked by the parking structure, so now we go around the east side of the knoll and the parking deck. It's the same sidewalk.
Well, there is a sidewalk there, but it's on the opposite side of the knoll. On the, on the same side of the knoll, there's no sidewalk at all.
Yes, there is. Immediately to the west of the knoll is a sidewalk. It had trees in it, not oak trees. It had trees in it, in tree grates, and, and it was lit. Throughout the, throughout the Oaks Mall, there are several of these sidewalks that traverse through the parking lot to get you from outer areas up to the mall. This particular one, besides picking up people from parking spaces, also serves to, to connect to Lynn and Hillcrest.
Uh huh.
So it's?
Well, there is a sidewalk there, but?
Yes.
It's on the, from my recollection, and I've visited the site a couple of times, it's on the opposite side of the street, on the knoll side. There's no sidewalk, it's just, it's just grass and, and brush.
That's, that's not correct.
Okay.
In fact, I'm, it probably shows up on the?
Well, that, that's where the proposed sidewalk would be.
No. If you look at the Oak Tree Site Plan?
Uh, yeah. In the addendum?
The Oak Tree Site Plan shows all of the existing contours and the existing parking. On the left, the west side of the, of the knoll, you see an area with, with no contours, and there's a curb, which, and parking spaces, which is the same location that the new curb and parking spaces are going to go. That flat area immediately east of those parking spaces is a sidewalk, is a wide sidewalk with, with tree wells that heads directly north to the mall. It's, it's there right now.
Well, I would beg to differ with you. There's a sidewalk there, but maybe you and I are?
Staff, staff can confirm that.
To me, a sidewalk is concrete, this, I mean, you could walk along there, but it's all grass and brush.
No.
No?
The, the west side is a, I would say, a 10 to 12 foot wide sidewalk with tree wells in it and lights. It's, is a very prominent sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I, you're right. There's a sidewalk there, but you and I aren't, aren't on the same side.
The other sidewalk, on the other side of the, of the ring road, is, is not, it's a normal width sidewalk, if you will, probably five feet wide, as this, as this continuation will be. But the one that's currently on the north side of the ring road, on the west side of the knoll, is a very wide, very prominent sidewalk. And like I said, you can, when you get back to staff, they can confirm that, I'm telling you exactly the situation.
All right. Well, let's get off the sidewalk for a minute.
Okay.
Let me ask you a couple of questions about tree number 156.
Mm-hmm.
Can you give me an estimate of how old that tree is?
It's hard to tell, because it's, it's in such lousy shape. It's, it's probably 100 years old.
100 years old? All right. Are you familiar with tree number 57?
Yes.
That tree's slated to be removed, right?
Transplanted, yes.
Transplanted?
Mm-hmm.
Well, according to the staff report, there's going to be basically two native oak trees that are going to be impacted. One's going to be transplanted, and one's going to be removed.
Number 157 is not a native oak tree.
No, no, no.
It's a cork oak that was, that was planted as part of the?
No, no, no. Tree 57.
Oh, 57?
57.
Oh, sure.
That's, that's slated to be removed, correct?
That's a, that's a transplanted tree. That's a tree that was out in the parking lot and now has already been boxed and sits in the area in the east parking lot that we call the nursery, where all the transplanted trees are awaiting their, their new locations.
All right, well, maybe staff's got these numbers backwards. It says 388 was going to be relocated, and 57, which lacks a canopy, and a D rating was approved for removal. Have they reversed the numbers then?
Yes.
Okay. So 388 will be the tree that's removed?
That's correct.
Okay. Has that been removed yet?
No.
Okay. That's the tree without the canopy?
Yes.
What's that tree look like?
It looks like a Y?
No canopy, no seedlings around it?
It's terrible.
Basically a stump?
It's, it's a tall stump. It's, it's a hazardous, it's a hazardous tree that, as we discussed when we brought this project before you, that if this project were not going to happen at all, that tree would be requested for removal.
Okay. 156, on the other hand, the tree in question tonight, do you think there's anything comparable between those two trees, as far as their condition?
156 and 388?
388. Because you're, you know, you're calling for the removal of 156.
Right.
And?
And the reason we're calling for the removal of 156 is that it's a, it's a D health and a, and a D appearance, and it's structurally unsound, and it would not survive transplanting. I, comparing the two, I would say that, that if you had to compare the two, it's, it's slightly better than, than 388, which is, which is really, really hazardous.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no, I, I do recall seeing a picture of 388 in one of the mall presentations, and, you know, it is in bad shape, about as bad as a tree could be, I would guess. Now, you mentioned the appearance on 156. Actually, it's rated C slash D.
Mm-hmm.
Not D.
Oh, okay.
C slash D.
Okay.
Because it does have a canopy.
It does have foliage, yes.
It does, well, it has a full canopy, and it does have seedlings around it.
Yes.
Suggesting a certain amount of viability if it's able to reproduce itself.
Oh, well, yes. It, it, we assume that those seedlings came from that tree, since it's the closest one. They could have come from any of them, but we had, we've always said that those were probably seedlings from that tree.
I mean, I would make that assumption. They're just dotted around the mother tree, so I would assume.
Sure.
So, so you, you would agree, then, that there's significant differences between 156 and 388?
There's?
As far as canopy, seedlings?
Viable seeds, it, it still is a, it still is a hazardous tree if there's a, if there's a target. And, and that's why initially, when, when the, we presumed that the knoll area was going to be able to be preserved, we were not concerned about it. Because to truly be a hazardous tree, you have to have a target, and we figured that that was an area where no one would be going up there. So if it falls over someday, it's, it's not going to be a problem. But the, the point with, with 156 is that it's a horrible candidate for trying to transplant. The, any tree that you transplant has a certain degree of, of shock, and it has to have the, the vigor to, to grow out of that. That particular tree, fairly certain would not survive transplanting. It's much better replaced with, with new viable trees.
Yeah, I mean, again, there is a certain subjectivity to the rating of these trees.
Absolutely.
And there's no guarantees either way.
About?
If it was transplanted, it may live.
Sure.
Right.
It may live.
It may. Okay.
And I'd suggest that you, you ask, ask your oak tree consultant these same questions. They can confirm that they're definitely, all of the ratings are definitely subjective, but there, there's, there's no disagreement that this is a, an adequate candidate for transplanting.
Yeah. I just see the distinction between the, the one and only tree that is to be slated for destruction versus one, one native oak that's be slated for destruction versus this one that you're suggesting be destroyed. There seems to me to be a significant, significant difference in the, in the quality and the health of the two trees. That's just my opinion.
Very minor difference.
Well, I would, I don't know, I would call a full canopy with seedlings around it minor. But that's, again, a lot of this is subjective, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions for Mr. Ennis? No, thank you, Mr. Ennis. Okay, we will go to, there's no other speakers. We do have one statement card in favor of the applicant. Let's go back to staff for follow-up and comments.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. With regard to the sidewalk, if you direct your attention to the monitor, the area map, it will show a sidewalk on the west side of the knoll, the white line, that is the sidewalk, and that is an existing sidewalk. So, and that's what Mr. Ennis was mentioning, and that sidewalk would be rerouted in front and to the east of the knoll to provide the required path travel from the street to the project. So there is an existing sidewalk. And the encroachment under Oak Tree 163 will be approximately 20 feet from the trunk of the tree, based on the grading plan that we have. So it will be within the code requirements. And Mr. Moore will elaborate on the Oak Tree 156 with regard to its health.
The, Mr., as Mr. Ennis stated, we, we walked the site together on most of these trees to see what effects the project would have on them. The, I think the big difference of the, in the two trees, as you, that you were asking about, is that one, first of all, is a valley oak, and so when they, when they fail or look bad, they really look bad. It has, you know, it's, it's completely bare, has no leaves on it or anything. Tree number 156 is a coastal live oak, and it's, one of the fallacies is that, of course, if a tree can reproduce, it's healthy. Usually what happens is a tree reproduces quite readily when it's not healthy. It's trying to replace itself. You'll find many seedlings around a tree that's, that's unhealthy. And this particular tree, I, because of the concerns, I went back up and looked at it on my way in tonight. And it's got, it's got some very big hollow trunks, so it would be a problem tree for transplanting anywhere else onto this site if it could be transplanted. Now, I'm the naysayer on transplanting. I, I'm not in favor of transplanting any oak bigger than about 12 inch, but, but I was proven wrong out here on the Civic Center, and we've got a tree that's still alive out there for now. And hopefully, it'll outlive me, and I won't have to say I told you so. But this particular tree, I'm afraid, I'm afraid structurally, this tree wouldn't, wouldn't survive transplanting. It may survive if it could be, you know, moved in place or something like that, which is something that we don't recommend. But as soon as you jar this tree, it's going to fall apart. It's, it's very, very much structurally unsound. So I would recommend? So I would recommend that, as has been suggested, that the tree be replaced with some healthy trees elsewhere on the site. And we, and we get trees like we have throughout this project that, that were planted. I did a presentation on this project some years ago, 20 years after it was called, and on the trees that we use for transplanting, or the trees we use for replacement trees from the original project. And we've got a, we've got a lot of really nice oaks because we've gone to the transplant, I mean, the replacement policy, when a tree wasn't really, really a candidate for transplant. It's a double jeopardy on transplanting. You spend, say, $10,000 transplanting that tree, and then we require a deposit equal to the value of the tree, and then when the tree dies, you have to spend it again. And it's, it's, it's quite a, a double jeopardy situation for, for the person transplanting the tree, because there is no guarantee, and in my opinion, that tree's not a good candidate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. You used a terminology there in the beginning of your talk, if the tree were to be moved in place, I think that's what you said. What, what does that mean?
Well, the, the least impact on a transplant is to move it immediately from one location to another in the same general area. The problem is that as soon as you move a tree, it's the same problem, of course. Leaving that tree in a box any length of time would certainly kill it, but moving that tree, the biggest problem with that tree is the structure. If a tree was too large to, say, transplant, there, there are instances where, as we did here at the Civic Center, we moved that tree a very short distance, and that's the, probably the only reason it has lived to this time.
Yeah, I witnessed the transplant of the tree here at the Civic Arts Plaza. Quite an interesting undertaking. So the best chance for that tree is to not box it, but keep it in the approximate location it's in now, and maybe back it up a little bit.
The best thing would be to leave it where it is if you were going to do anything.
Got it.
Other than that, I think that tree would, would not survive moving even, even a few feet, because, as I say, once you jar that tree, which you have to do by taking the roots loose and moving it, it'll fall apart.
If I could just add something to that, one of the reasons why those trees are there, that it's a resistant volcanic crop that exists in that parking lot, and that oak tree and that grove of trees was preserved more or less intact because of the, the subsurface bedrock. And one of the concerns we had when we went out and looked at it again in the field, because I, I was the one that prepared the addendum, was that that tree is rooted in bedrock, and to attempt to move the tree would be almost impossible, given its condition. It's solidly rooted in bedrock, and as Mr. Moore indicated, in order to, to box that tree appropriately, there'd be a considerable amount of vibration and work involved in doing that. It just, geotechnically, it, there's other problems that are posed here with that tree.
But you, you wouldn't necessarily have to. If you use Mr. Moore's approach about moving it in place, you wouldn't box it. You just, boxing it would jeopardize it. You'd immediately transplant it in an approximate location.
But you, you can't do that because the, the trees, the tree's roots are actually entwined in the bedrock, so there's no way to, to separate the roots from the bedrock. That's one of the concerns we had when we went out and looked at the, the tree. It just wasn't a suitable candidate for a number of different reasons, not only its health. The younger trees that are proposed for transplanting, they're sound trees, and they can withstand that kind of treatment and excavation, but this tree is, is old, and it's deeply rooted into the bedrock. That's one of the other problems that were...
Wouldn't the smaller trees all be rooted in the bedrock as well?
They, they would, but they can take, their root systems are not nearly as extensive as a large tree like this. This, this is a tree that has a well-developed root system. It follows the fractures in the rock material. So the smaller trees don't have that type of extensive root system, and they are more eligible to be transplanted.
Mm-hmm.
This is a real problem for this tree, not only its structural condition.
Thank you. Oh, and, and Mr. Alawame, that, I think I got, I figured out the business with the sidewalk. I think Mr. Ennis was referring to the western sidewalk that's already there and existing. I'm aware of that sidewalk, correct? But what I was referring to was the southern sidewalk that isn't there but is proposed. Is there not a southern sidewalk that will run parallel to the new road that's been proposed?
There is a parallel sidewalk runs on the south side of the ring road.
Yes.
That connects to the bridge under Lynn and Hellcrest. And that sidewalk at the south side of the ring road terminates at the southwest corner of the knoll, and that's where the connection, you have to cross that driveway to get to the knoll at that south, at that corner, and now it will be rerouted to the other direction. But there is a parallel sidewalk that exists to that point.
Right, yeah, I'm familiar with that one as well, but maybe I read these plans wrong, but from what I've read here, part of the proposal is to put a sidewalk along the southern, the southern side of the knoll, right up against the knoll?
Correct, on the south side of the knoll, right. To get around the knoll to go northward, northbound. So yes, there is, there will be on the south side and the east side of the knoll.
Right. And I was only merely trying to ascertain the absolute necessity of the sidewalk, because without the sidewalk, there'd be less encroachment on Oak Number 163.
Correct. And we looked at extending the side, the sidewalk where it is now on the south side of the ring road, but there are other problems with existing other trees in there, including sycamore and the channel, the drainage. So there are other issues with, with extending the sidewalk where it is on the south side and come up just on the east side of the knoll, and that created its own problems. This is the least impact to the existing conditions in that location. And this encroachment, based on the location of the tree, will not impact any roots, because the trees are high on the knoll, and there's hardly any, because of the size of it, and there's a little notch where the, the two-to-one grading will be, and there's hardly any roots will be in that location. So we don't anticipate any impacts to that tree from these encroachments, based on, on our evaluation.
And the very outside circumference of that sidewalk will be how many feet from the trunk of that tree?
The retaining will be more than 20 feet from the trunk of the tree.
More than 20 feet. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? Mr. Towns?
Thank you, Chair Fisher. I just wanted to step back a minute and say that, I think, speaking for all staff and, in terms of this case, if we'd been aware of these oak trees and their potential for impact through the west parking structure, staff would have recommended, and as part of the original major modification to the oak tree permit, that these trees be handled as they are tonight. This is obviously something that we wish that we were aware of previously, but nonetheless, our recommendation at that time and this evening, in my opinion, would have been similar. And so I thought that's relevant from a, from the perspective of background on this case.
Okay, we'll go back to the applicant, Mr. Hokinson. You have five minutes rebuttal. Please state your name and city of residence again for the record. Thank you.
With the Masonic Company, Santa Monica, California. I don't really have any rebuttal. I'm clear on the sidewalks now, if that's a good thing. And I will say, I'm, I'm just, appreciate staff's work in terms of pulling this together. Their patience with field conditions that do arise from time to time, and I would also like to thank both John, as well as our team, for responding as quickly as they did to keep things to a dull roar. So thank you.
Questions of the applicant? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hokinson. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open for commission discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Lynn?
I'm, I'm satisfied that the applicant in this matter, working diligently with staff, has placed protocols and standards for controls and follow-ups. So with that, I move to approve Oak Tree Major Modification 2007-747, subject to conditions including those in the supplemental package.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Adams?
Okay, well, could we discuss, I'd like to discuss this a little. That would be appropriate at this point, would it, would it not?
Sure. There's a, there's a motion. You can certainly open discussion and get your thoughts out.
Yeah, I guess the discussion would center on the motion, and at the risk of being a little rhetorical here, I'd just like to read you something out of our municipal code. And I'll kind of shorten it a little bit, but the, it states that "The beauty of Thousand Oaks enhanced by large numbers of majestic oak trees." And at one time, our area was almost completely covered by an oak forest. The development of the city has resulted in the removal of a great number of these trees. Further destruction of oak trees would detrimentally affect the safety and welfare of Thousand Oaks citizens. The oak's preservation contributes to the welfare and the aesthetics of the community and retains a great historical and environmental value for these trees." So what, what we have over there is, is an oak grove. It's, it's kind of like a mini environment in a way, and it's actually not one knoll, but it's two knolls. There's a northern knoll and a southern knoll, and there's a saddle in between. And it's really the only original native oak grove on the property that I'm aware of. It's also interesting to note that this topographical feature at one point was part of the golf course, which used to be where the mall is now, but, so there's a history. But there's even a further history, I mean, geographically speaking. So now we, we have this dilemma, you know, due to some miscalculations, you know, we have to, we have to look at how to deal with these, with these oak trees. It was interesting to note that what Mr. Hokinson said when I asked him about, could the parking spaces be, be made up for in the, in the eastern garage? And it was his opinion that, yes, they could. So if that's the case, I would say, why are we, why are we entertaining the notion to chop the front of the knoll off, chop the back of the knoll off, destroy a 100-year-old oak tree, and transplant three or four others? If the only issue is these 33 parking spaces, and that can be picked up in the second phase, would that not be the way to go? I'd be, be interested to hear my fellow commissioners' thoughts on that.
Commissioner Lynn?
I, I understand, and I'm, and I'm certainly sensitive to, to your concerns about the oak trees. I, for the record, Oak Tree 157 was not native.
No, no, you're right. It's a cork tree, yeah.
But with that being said, I think that, you know, it, it comes, it comes down to the, the old argument, you know, gosh, do we move the trees for a project or not? That's a $65,000 question. I think here, though, that with the testimony from our tree experts, the fact of the matter is that, yes, we are, we are moving some, but I think that Thousand Oaks has gone above and beyond in terms of, for the right reasons, in terms of protecting our trees, and we're getting a three to one here. And I think that, that while you have a point, I think that we also have, have a project that has been approved, and I, you know, I think that we've put the proper controls on here to make sure that we preserve our beauty and really up our tree count on that particular project.
Well, you, may, I'm, may I answer that? Or just, I wanted to just add to the, you're right that that one tree is non-native, but the rest, all the rest of the trees on that knoll are, they're all native. It's a, like I said, it's an oak grove, and some of them are much bigger than 156. And again, I would stress, it's, it's not just the trees, it's the knoll itself. It's the knoll itself. We're going, we're going to go in there and regrade the front and the back of that knoll and take off a substantial amount of its, of its contours. So, again, I, okay, that's all I have to say there.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I'm really concerned about the 33 parking spaces. You say, okay, you can take them from here and you can put them in Phase Two, but I really think the majority of the shopping and the parking is going to be by the Nordstroms and the Macy's down there. I really don't want to take any places away, just as much as I fought for those sidewalks around the Oaks. That was my big thing during that whole hearing that night, was to have so that there was lots of pedestrian parking, not for only the people shopping there, but I have several friends, young friends with children, and they love nothing more than to be able to go down to the Oaks, get their strollers through those pilings that were there, and, and walk around the Oaks. And so I don't, I don't want those sidewalks touched, and I really think it's important to keep those 33 spots in that parking garage where I believe that there's going to be the majority of the parking, or that not only the ladies, but the men would be to shop at those stores.
Well, it's not me suggesting that the 33 spaces could be moved. In fact, I was surprised to hear Mr. Hokinson say they could. I, I thought he'd say, no, they can't. It comes as a surprise to me that that could even be done, but, and I, and I understand what you're saying about the sidewalk, but just keep in mind, this sidewalk that they're anticipating and putting in is at the far, far southern edge of the mall, almost next to the freeway. And I talked to a few of the security officers out there, and there's, when the mall was in operation in that area, there was virtually no pedestrian traffic there whatsoever, and I wouldn't anticipate that there would be, and we're talking about a sidewalk that's probably 75 feet. And so I'm just saying that it's, it's certainly not a sidewalk that's adjacent to the mall with a very heavy pedestrian traffic. That's all.
Commissioner Grimley?
Well, I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion. I am looking at the testimony that's already been given on this, and, and I think that's substantial testimony. Also, too, I think it's, I think it's wrong for us to dissect this down to this one little area without looking at the total of this project. I was amazed, Commissioner Adams, when I saw what was going to be happening to the entire project, how many additional trees were going to be added, what this is going to look like for the future. And I, you know, this is an investment towards that future. Sometimes we have to look at an individual oak tree, and if it's not viable, we don't move it. And that doesn't destroy our quality of life here in the Conejo Valley, especially when we'll, we'll, we will be instead planting new trees for the future. I think that's a better decision to, to go with, so I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion.
Okay, I guess I can, yeah, my two cents. I certainly agree with the comments of the other commissioners, although I do agree with certain aspects of Commissioner Adam on his thoughts on some of this. Looking at the big picture and moving forward, we are increasing the number of oaks. We're getting some pretty good-sized box oaks to put in place. That's an immediate upgrade to that site. It's unfortunate that the health of this tree prevents us from doing much of anything with it, and, you know, putting healthier trees in there, I, I think it's reasonable. As the applicant stated, they won't be back here again. I'm satisfied that their monitors and our monitors will make sure that things are done correctly and that we move ahead on this, but I think overall, it's reasonable. We are adding more oak trees to the site, and it's only going to enhance the looks of it, and I think it's a good thing. So with that, Commissioner Adam?
Thank you very much. I have no quarrel with the mall. It's a, it's a great project, it's long overdue, and it's, it's, it's a big benefit for Thousand Oaks. I'm merely looking at this one little section from a planning standpoint. Perhaps I might prefer a potential amendment to your motion, Commissioner Lynn? Maybe you would entertain that? And may I go ahead? And may I go ahead and suggest it?
Yeah, you have to go ahead and announce it, or make a statement of what you're proposing.
Oh, okay, well, I'm proposing that we amend the motion to read thusly, that, well, just let me say that we'd like to go in there and leave it better than what it was, right? We've got a little oak grove there, and if anything, when it's all done, it'd be nicer if it was better than the oak grove that we have now. Maybe this is a way we could, in fact, do that. We've already, 156A was cut down mistakenly, and that, thanks to the city, will be replaced with a, well, at least that's part of the motion, replaced with a 60-inch tree. That's a nice big tree there, and that'll be right on the knoll. The other ones, 156, 156C, 156E, and 157, and 156 is the big tree. I think it's possible that those trees, certainly 156CE and 157, that's not in any question, could be transplanted on that very knoll where they sit, back into that saddle, back into the existing saddle. And then, of course, the parking structure would rise, those trees would act as a buffer, and they would, they would soften the structure a little bit. And then on the eastern side, where the knoll is actually going to be expanded, part of the parking lot's going to be torn out, and there's going to be, you know, lawn or whatever put in there, these trees that we aren't able to save, 156B and the like, we would then replace them with some, with some new trees and make them substantial trees. I mean, I know 24-inch trees sound, sound pretty big, but that's only the pot size, they're not particularly large trees, they're just little saplings. Could we not go in there and put in a couple of 48s and a 60, and build this grove up? And as far as, as far as 156, hey, I have my doubts too, but on that property right now, there's, there are dozens of transplanted trees boxed at the end of the parking lot. There's elms, there's sycamores, there's oaks. So it's, this wouldn't be anything particularly new for Mace Ridge, and I think the tree deserves a chance. If it dies, well, it's about to be chainsawed anyway, so why not give it the chance of transplanting? If it dies, then we can replace it. I know that's kind of a long amendment.
That really wasn't an amendment. I need an actual amendment.
That wasn't, that was not an amendment.
I need you to be precise.
That was not an amendment, you're right. Okay, let me, let me rephrase it. My amendment would be transplant 156, 156C, 156E, and 157 on the original knoll site, and 156B would be removed, and then the tree that's going to be moved, we would replace on the eastern side with some substantial-sized trees, preferably, I'd say, a couple of 40 inches, 48 inches and a 60 inch, to maintain the integrity of the knoll and actually leave it better than the way we found it.
Okay, can I clarify? I just want to make sure that we understand what the motion is. You are making a motion to amend. I would imagine it would be condition number 14, that, well, that tree 156B be replaced with two 48-inch and one 60-inch box tree, and that tree 156 be transplanted rather than removed?
Yeah, that's essentially correct, but those two, those three replacement trees, which we have to have anyway, by law, we have to have three replacement trees, they would go down on the eastern flat portion of the oak grove.
So you also want, in your motion to amend, that the transplanted trees and the new trees be relocated on the knoll? Is that what you're saying?
The transplanted trees would move back approximately 10 feet from where they are now, and we would put new, big trees on the eastern side, the flat portion near the parking lot. The big difference here is 156. I'm asking to give it a chance. And I, you know, it's interesting, because now I'm getting, I'm digressing, but the removal of 156A and the replacement with a 60-inch tree was referred to as restitution. This situation was kind of thrust upon us, and I understand mistakes happen, but in a sense, it's restitution to give this tree a chance. It was supposed to be preserved, so it's going to be chainsawed anyway. Why not, as Mr. Moore said, move it back 10 feet to an approximate, approximate location and see what happens? I don't think the cost would be astronomical, going off of my motion, my amendment.
Okay, discussion on Commissioner Adams' motion or amendment. Motion to amend. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, I'll be very honest about it. I don't want to redesign this whole thing, and I'm not supportive of the amendment. I don't think tree 156 is going to live.
Any other comments to the proposed amendment? Commissioner Grumley?
Okay, I'm a little confused, but I'm going to say, I'm going to go with Commissioner Reynolds. I don't think this is the appropriate way to do this. If we were going to do this, I think then we needed to bring that before city staff, before tonight, and so that the experts could, and our city planners could review this and bring us with the information for us to be able to render that kind of a decision. Again, I think we're, you know, we're, at some point in time, we've got to trust the sum of the testimony and listen to the testimony that we've heard, and I am going to support that testimony. I think it was very credible by two experts that have given us in regards to that individual tree. And so based upon everything that's been given for me, I'm not going to be in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner Lunn, anything to add on your motion? Do you want to change?
I have nothing to add on the motion. I do concur with the statements made by both, by both my fellow commissioners, Reynolds and Grumley.
Commissioner Adam?
I'm sorry, if I may, just for the sake of clarity, for Commissioner Grumley, really, I mean, it all boils down in, with my amendment to tree 156, nothing else basically changes. All the, all the trees that were to be transplanted, I'm asking that they be transplanted, and the trees that were to be replaced would be replaced, but it, you know, that, that's the sticking point, is that 156.
Okay, but we've heard testimony.
Yeah.
From two experts, saying that 156 is not viable for transplant. So what, so what you're asking is, you're asking for us to ask our applicant to go to expense so that we can try out something that's contrary to what two experts have told us? Is that correct?
Well, I-
Is that correct, on how, what you're asking on your amendment?
To a certain degree, yeah.
Okay, then in my, in my opinion, is that I would have to go in support on the testimony that's given by an expert first, because then I think that it would not be prudent for us to be turning around and asking an applicant to go to great expense on something that is not supported by expert testimony. So that's, that's the reason why I'm, why I would be voting, why I would not be voting in favor of your motion.
I understand, but I do think those tree experts freely admitted that their analysis of these trees is subjective, and it's, it's almost impossible to say with any certainty that a tree can make it or not, and 156 does have a canopy, it does, it is, looks a lot more viable than the one tree that's going to be destroyed. And I, you know, to be honest with you, considering the situation we've put it, been put in, I don't see where it would be a big stretch for Mace Ridge to take that one extra step for us, for the city. I don't, I don't think we're dealing with a lot of cost here, and I think the tree deserves a chance, but that's my opinion.
I still stick with my earlier assessment and staff's report. You know, certainly the judgment of both tree experts is subjective, but I don't know that you would ever get 100% that, yeah, I'm 100% sure that this tree or that tree's going to survive. With this embedded into the rock, that's a pretty expensive gamble, and I just, I just don't see it. So we need to vote on Commissioner Adam, need to vote on his amendment. So this is Commissioner Adam, his motion to amend. Vote, please.
Motion was denied, four to one, with Commissioner Adam voting yes.
Okay, now we will go back to Commissioner Lunn's motion. Commissioner Lunn, do you have any additional comments?
No additional denim to the motion, but I just wanted to point out, to piggyback onto your, onto your statement, Chair Fisher, about subjectivity, because I think it's important here. All opinions offered by human beings, by some definitions, are subjective in nature. However, if this was in a criminal proceeding, and we were at trial, and we have a long, long history in this city of accepting professional testimony from experts, like Verdyer in a criminal trial, so I have to, have to say that I, that I do, mirror Commissioner Grumley's comments about, about the experts here, and I will not entertain any further amendment to the motion.
Vote, please.
Motion passed, four to one. Adam opposed.
Okay, there's a 10-day appeal period. Let's move to item number seven, miscellaneous items, reports, and referrals. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Chair Fisher. If I could turn the commission's attention to page 23 of your packet, we have two cases planned for you to consider on March 26th. One is a minor mod to a residential plan development permit, which will be coming to you on appeal, and also a major modification to a residential plan development permit as well. Also, if I could direct your attention to page 25 of the staff report, the item which you heard earlier on, at a previous hearing, in fact, on February 26th, on menu boards and recommended approval to the city council, will be heard by the city council on April 3rd of this year. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Let's go to item number nine, minutes of February 26th. Commissioner Grumley?
I move to approve the minutes of the meetings of February 26, 2007.
Vote, please.
Motion passed, five zero.
You have that look. Item number 10, AB 1234 reports. Any reports? No reports? We'll go back to AB 1234 reports. Commissioner Grumley?
Yes, I have one. I attended the economic forecast, and Mark, when did I attend that?
That was Friday before last.
And it was very beneficial and very interesting.
Okay, back to commission comments. No comments. Okay, we will, we will adjourn to 6:30 PM on March 26, 2007.